Regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to your room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, and the city's planning consultant, who's actually not here, and the city's attorney's office. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. The roll call, Ms. Sarniki, please.
Mr. Abidian.
Here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Faison.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Krent.
Here.
Ms. Koopa.
Here.
Mr. Zanzika.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
Ms. Howe.
Here.
Coram President, item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Mr. Faison, and seconded by Ms. Koopa. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Faison.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Krent.
Yes.
Ms. Koopa. Mr. Zanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Ms. Abidian.
Yes. Item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we move to item number five on the agenda, zoning board of appeals report, the ZBA report. Ms. Koopa.
Yes, there were two variance requests. One was approved, that they granted the request, it was a setback. Instead of the 25-foot front yard setback, they said that they could have a 13-foot. And then the second one, the zoning ordinance required new parcels to have 85 feet of lot width, and so they postponed this because the request was to split the parcel into 81 feet each instead of 85, and so it's been postponed. The other thing I want to mention is, I was not at the meeting, but I had asked earlier for Mr. Evans to provide a report on the number of variances requested and granted in the past year, and he provided it. If anyone else on the planning commission would like it, I'm sure we could, I'll forward it to Brent and I'll get it to everybody else. I think it's good to see, I know Brent does one for all of us, it's good to see what the ZBA does as well. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Koopa. Item number six on the agenda, downtown development authority report.
There was not a meeting this month, but there will be one April 18th, next month.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, planning and zoning report, Mr. Sodan.
Whispering Park Cluster Development, modular property, section 11 school property that the planning commission reviewed and made a recommendation on, will be going before city council May 7th. The applicant had some vacation, he was going on, that date worked for him the best. So, if you're wondering what happened to it, we haven't forgotten about it, he just, he requested that the public hearing be pushed back for city council. Also, we'll be presenting some modified language on the text amendments that we talked about at first meeting in April. Mr. Carl out on vacation, we just kind of ran out of racetrack preparing the language for this meeting, so you'll see it in a couple weeks.
Okay, and that's a cluster north of Long Lake by JCPark?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sodan. Item number eight on the agenda, special use in preliminary site plan review, special hearing, public hearing, special use in preliminary site plan review, file number SUJPLN2018-0003, proposed Flagstar Bank Drive-Up ATM northeast corner, northwest corner, excuse me, of Rochester and Long Lake, 5017 Rochester, section 10, currently zoned NN, L, neighborhood node L district. Mr. Sodan.
Thank you. And for those students in attendance tonight, Mr. Frame's working on a quiz, 10 questions, and for me to sign your paper, you need at least an eight. So pay attention, it's a serious business. Flagstar Bank, I'm having fun with this, I've had a long day. So, Flagstar Bank is an existing bank located at the northwest corner of Rochester and Long Lake Road. The strip center and the bank were approved in 1969. The bank did not receive special use approval, so although it's a relatively simple modification, because it has never received special use approval, the use is permitted as per special use approval, we've got to go before the planning commission with a public hearing. And ATMs and drive-throughs are permitted by special use. It is an existing bank branch, there are two remote teller kiosks located here on the west side of the building. Access and circulation are not going to change, these are existing curb cuts. There is sufficient parking. Cross accesses is throughout the site allowing people who want to visit the bank or the retail center to cross over each of the property lines to do so. Plenty of parking. In terms of landscaping lighting, if you go visit the site, there's not a lot out there now. They're adding four trees along Long Lake, five trees along Rochester, two parking wide island trees, so we're seeing 11 more trees than we see today. They're adding, the only improvements they're making in terms of lighting are adding two lights for the ATM, you see the lights there. They will prove before final approval that the intensity is not going to negatively impact the site or the neighbors. So, we say in the resolution that require a photometric plan, it's really to talk about those two lights because no other changes are being made to the site. Proposing significant improvements to the building. Now, keep in mind, this is an existing building, so as different from a demolition and new build, it's very difficult to come up with and meet all the standards that are required, but this is a significant improvement there. So what he proposes to do is a new architectural roof on reconstructed Mansard roof, a new tower element at the corner, replacing existing stone with brick along the east elevation to match the brick along the Long Lake elevation, and then adding a new drive-through overhang. So the photo in the corner is what's existing, and here, this is a drawing of what is proposed. The architect, Mike Bojo, is here, I'll let him present his plan, but this gives a snapshot of how significant these improvements are. Again, this is a view from Long Lake today, and this is what's being proposed, and this tower element really helps announce the bank on the corner, and it's a very busy, important corner in the city of Troy. So, we've been stepping up our presentation game lately, taking advantage of this, of these meetings as an opportunity to engage the public and inform the public about what it is the planning commission does, what it is the planning department does. So, we take an opportunity to take a couple minutes to explain just what it is we're doing tonight. So, this application is a special use, and what a special use does, it allows for certain land uses in a given zoning district that generally require a more in-depth study and additional site design or use restrictions. So stated another way, a use that's permitted by right, it's considered to be appropriate in any location within that zoning district. A special use is considered on a case-by-case basis. It may be appropriate, but it may not, depending on the circumstances involved. It allows review by the planning commission, it requires a public hearing, and it does allow the planning commission to place conditions on the approval of an application. And if the planning commission does place conditions, they must have a rational relationship to public health, safety, and welfare. There's a section in the ordinance, section 9.03, that states that before approving any special use, any special use application, the planning commission needs to consider all these standards, including compatibility with adjacent uses in the master plan, traffic impact, impact on public services. And the options available to the planning commission this evening when considering the special use, they can, we can grant the request, deny the request, table action on the request, or grant the request subject to specific conditions. There's a number of findings that we've made for this application. We find that although the use predated the requirement for special use approval, the building's been operating for a bank and a drive-through for a very long time. And the improvement and expansion of the existing use is commercial in nature, fits with the existing commercial character of the property and the surrounding area, and the proposed improvement and expansion of the commercial use is consistent with the master plan, and the improvement and expansion of the existing use would have minimal impact on the overall site traffic. So, with all that being said, staff recommends preliminary site plan approval and special use approval with two conditions. One is that they submit light fixtures officially, submit light fixtures, like fixtures, excuse me, on a photometric plant, prior to final site plan approval, and they obtain approval for the canopy clearance from the fire department prior to final site plan approval. Any questions? And I remind you, Mr. Chairman, that Mike Bojo is here representing Flagstar Bank.
Thank you, Mr. Sodan. If we don't have any questions for Mr. Sodan, then the applicant is here. May I step up, please, and show you the project?
I'm here in great board here, I'm the architectural project. Even though Brent explained the site, the things that we think really is going to improve the site, currently, as usual on the pictures, there's two drive kiosks here, so when cars went to, to use those, they have to, one car has to drive around the other car, it's not a very good situation. So what we're doing is, we're requesting to fill the canopy, so the one remote kiosk here will be relocated here, and we'll have two lane lines of stack up for the drive-up. Secondly, we're requesting approval for a drive-up ATM machine, and as part of that, right down there's no landscaping in the parking lot, there's a couple lanes of traffic, it's some parking bumpers. So we're proposing to install curb alleys, landscaping, a little bit of landscaping in the parking lot area, plus, as Brent mentioned, more landscaping on the Long Lake and Rochester sides.
Sir, can you please just grab the mic, or actually step behind the mic, or pull the mic in front?
Again, Brent showed you the photos, I'll show it to you again. Right now, there's, they've filled in windows and things where the life of the building, there's two, because of brick, there's block, there's stone, just a mishmash of things, a lot of ephes, those kinds of things, and this Mansard has kind of a, has a little raise on the end of it. So what we're proposing to do is renovate the building, and we initially in our drawings said we would match the existing brick, but in reality, this brick is over 40 years old, so we probably can't match it. So, in the interim, since we submitted this, we decided we would propose all-new brick on the entire building. These are current brick, I have some samples, the current brick that most of the Flagstar branches are now using, a red and a beige-y accent color brick. So we are looking at all-new brick, all-new shingles, the new tower feature, which would be all-brick, and I think with that, coupled with the landscaping in the parking lot of all along, the two-road franchises will be a great improvement for the site. And currently, there's some interior renovations going on within the building, because they are renovating the interior now, and then phase two is the exterior if this is approved. And I think if you compare the two, there's, even though there's a Mansard, we don't exactly like Mansards these days, but trying to work with the building as much as possible, there's a great improvement over what is existing today. So, that's the exterior of the building. I have some material samples here. Let me put this down. These are the brickwork we're proposing, this is the standard brick, and most of the new Flagstars anywhere in Michigan, the field brick and the accent brick. This is the, would be the shingles, there's over red on the building here, which is our trademark, that side would be the red, ephes would be white, and gutter would be dark brown. Currently, the existing window frames are green, and we're hoping budget will allow us to change our fridge out to clear room and sort of, again, a little more of the deal, a little bit of coverage. But that's our color scheme, that's the color scheme for all-new Flagstar banks, but we still might do it with the banks. That's basically the goal.
Good, thank you, Mr. Sodan.
Mike, you indicated in your email, there's actually going to be less ephes on the building once this is complete.
Yes, yes, let me just point it out. Currently, there's two levels of ephes along here. There's an overhang in ephes, then for some reason, this body of ephes drops down below the overhang. I propose to take off, to remove this lower level of ephes, and have the brick come right up to the upper level of ephes overhang, so there'll be a little bit less ephes on the entire building, only in overhang areas, and nothing else.
A question?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
At the base of those columns, what is that material, the whitish color on the end?
It's a stone, it's a cast stone.
Cast stone, very nice.
Mr. Tagle.
Question, is the brick going to actually be a face, four-inch face brick?
Yes.
Okay.
But it should be existing brick often, right?
Okay. The other question, are there going to be any gutters and downspouts on this building, or is it all internal drainage?
The current roof behind the Mansard interior range, at entrances, we'll put some gutters, just only at entrances, because for some reason, to put gutters here, we'll group it to baby, I mean, the plant.
And so you will have downspouts somewhere?
Couple of them.
Where is the main entrance button? Is it on the north face?
The main entrance is on the west face, right here. So this little baffle will be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the north side, it'll be on the north side, and this little baffle will be a gutter, and a couple of downspouts in the corners will be where the plant pops out, and then it would be that.
That'll be the extent of the gutters, will just be at the downspouts of the north?
Yes. And currently, they're that, and they get ice on the blockways, which is up to do.
Sure.
Mr. Edmonds.
The, I noticed on the north elevation, it says the ATM, the current exterior is going to be removed, is that going to be placed inside the lobby then?
No, it's going to be, it's going to be replaced with a drive-up ATM.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Tagle.
Question for you, Mr. Sodan, how about trash? Is there, how do they handle their trash? Is there a dumpster anywhere?
I can't stand.
Okay.
They keep their trash indoors, and then probably they take it away, because it's secure trash, there's no dumpster.
Okay.
Just a reminder, there's no requirement that you have a dumpster. The requirement is if you do have a dumpster, it has to be screened appropriately.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm just curious, I don't see any drainage on the site plan. Is there existing, there's very little anyway, is that existing stormwater?
There's existing stormwater drainage on the site, and we're grading the, no, I don't think so. We're grading the, we're actually having less impervious surface after this than we do now, because we're eliminating paving in these green areas, not much, we're eliminating paving in these green areas. There's some ditch basins in this area, and the entire site has been graded, as it does now, it goes to the ditch basins on site. So we're not changing or draining by the tides at all.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. So this is a public hearing, and I will open it up, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item?
You get extra points if you ask a question. Ask your friend.
It's a really pretty building. I liked your presentation.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Or regarding this project? Yes. I thought it was really interesting that there has to be this much discussion and talk about, to approve renovations for that. I thought it was its own business that it could just do whatever it wants. That's interesting.
Actually, if you'd like to speak, you can speak at the mic. Would you like to speak?
There's some questions.
Sure, actually, speak at the mic, so we can record.
I was just wondering how you guys on the committee have such, so much experience and knowledge about like, how drainage works, and how like, the bricks and cased work for a building are formed, like, basically how you have so much knowledge about buildings, like?
Well, I can answer it. I'm a professional engineer, and I worked 40, almost 45 years with the Oakland County Drain Commission Office, so it's, I have a little background in the industry, but it's, we have several professionals on, I have a committee, John Table, for example, is an architect, we have attorneys on the committee, and they're all volunteers.
Yeah, Ms. Cruz.
So, yes, I'm an attorney by education, and I know nothing about architecture and building, and I can't do the math for it either. But I, we all do take training, we all go to, what do you call it, citizen plant, citizen, help me, Don.
Citizen planning.
Citizen planning, right, right. So we all take a course, and we do this citizen planning where we learn more about zoning and building requirements, and how different communities work, and so we do get a foundation from it, and then we build on it from there, and then, like I said, we have various backgrounds, but you do have quite a few experts that sit on the board.
We have planners that attend the MAP conference and meet all the credentials, and then do the capstone presentation.
Yes, we have. Okay. They're telling me from here, let's say something.
Our most recent graduate of the master citizen.
Certified.
Certified master citizen.
I can't get it out. I have it certified, but I can't get.
There it comes.
There it comes. So my mom has to come, because every time I get something, she puts it on a frame, puts it on the wall. I've got a refrigerator magnet? No. If you all have a sink. So you have to sit in a class, seven units, and learn about planning, and the most challenging one was about zoning. There were two units about zoning, and that's what the special use, we talk about special use, so any particular parcel of land, we have zoning laws and ordinances that determine how that land can be used. And so we are granting a special use, because it's not according to, or we change zoning, that it's, whatever it's permissible for, am I saying it correctly?
Yeah, yeah, so just to add on to that, so before it even gets to this board, so this is, this board is a planning commission, they're volunteers, they're.
Appointed.
Appointed by the mayor, and affirmed by city council, and, but before it even gets here, we have a pre-application meeting with Mr. Bojo, the architect, talk about potential issues, they submit the application, and I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner by education, so we circulated internally, and we get feedback from the engineer, and the Department of Public Works, and the building official, and the fire department, and we get all that information, because I'm not an expert in those things. We take those comments, and we prepare a report, and we make a recommendation based on all the information at hand. So, no one here is an expert in everything, it's really a team effort, and the final step in the process before giving the preliminary site plan approval is this meeting. So, great question, though.
Yes, any other comments?
How long does the process take?
Yeah, if, can you please just ask your question at the mic?
And the reason that you're asking it at the mic is because this meeting is a public meeting, and it's recorded, and you can watch it later on on YouTube, because the city of Troy has a channel, and if you don't speak into the mic, the public recording won't have your voice.
Okay, so how long does the process take?
Excellent question. So, so we have, typically, we have a pre-application meeting, and so a developer comes with an idea, and they've done the numbers, they think, if they think, they submit something that's going to work and make profits, so that they're successful, so they come before the staff with an idea, we say, yeah, this is great, maybe tweak this, this, they go back, they put together an application, they submit it, and the next available meeting, which is usually about a month away, we get them on the agenda, we take action, typically it's one meeting, and that's preliminary site plan approval, so that's basically approving the layout of the site. So, with this application, there'll be granted special use approval and preliminary site plan approval. That gives them the go-ahead to work out the details, so that he'll, Mike will hand it off to his engineer, they'll get final site plan approval, that'll take another, for this one, this isn't a lot of heavy lifting, but some applications, six or seven weeks, they get that, then they submit a building permit, and they can start construction. So, from beginning to end, depends on the scope of the project, what you're looking at, typically about a year from that pre-add meeting to when construction is complete, plus or minus, depends on how, how much scope and how much construction is involved. Plus or minus, depends on how, how much scope and how much construction is involved.
Yeah, yes.
So my question is, I'd just like to know, like, what are the most common reasons that a proposal such as Flagstars would run into trouble with the committee and not be approved?
Really good question. Ms. Cruz, you want to try that one?
Yeah, so sometimes when we don't, well, let's start with, every project that comes before us has law associated with it, right? So tonight's law, if you will, is special use. And so earlier in the presentation, Brent went through all of the bullet points that make up a special use project. Sometimes a project comes before us, and it's by right. And by right means that if it meets all of the language in the ordinance, we can't really say no, right? So in those instances, we don't say no. But if we have discretion, like in a special use, or the PUD, which stands for public.
Planned unit development.
Planned unit development, something that falls under the law of planned unit development, where we have discretion, right? Each of these laws have criteria that have to be met. And if the project doesn't meet the criteria that's been laid out in the law or the ordinance that it applies, that is assigned to it, then we can say no. I don't think we have said no very often. What we like to do, and what we try to do instead, is to work with the developer and let that person know why they're deficient, or what they could do to improve the project and bring it back to us with the improvement, so that we could go ahead and give the approval. And that has been, I think, the path that we've taken far more frequently than no.
Yeah, this is a somewhat unique situation because, and I agree with everything, because the depth of this parcel is really big. There's no residential neighbors that are impacted by this. But along Rochester Road, there are some situations where the depth between Rochester Road and the property to the back is not, is really, is really shallow. So you can have speaker boxes, or dumpsters, or, you know, secondary impacts associated with like noise, and fumes, and smells, and brightness of lights, and these types of activity. And I think where it gets a little complicated is where there's friction between, between land uses, for example, between commercial and residential. Those are some instances where we pay really close attention to the secondary impacts of the use. This one's a little bit different. It's at a busy intersection next to a retail center. So the impacts really aren't going to be felt by anybody.
Sometimes if we have a large number of people who are protesting against a site development, and we find out that the developer has not met with those residents before, sometimes we'll postpone that until such time as they have a chance to meet with the developer. Many times, that does minimize some of the comments that we get.
I think it's also important to note that a lot of proposals, this proposal is unique also because it's just an addition to an existing building. I think that might be the first one where I've been on this commission, that it's just an addition. Most proposals that we get are completely new buildings, new developments. And those are a lot more complicated and take a lot more review than this one. So this one has passed rather, relatively faster.
Any other questions?
We haven't voted yet.
We have voted. Yeah, if you have a question.
So given this project is approved, how does the City of Troy come to the picture with like funding? Or does Flagstar Bank have to like invest completely in it? Or does the City of Troy like provide grants or anything like that? Is there a council devoted to like diverting funds to this project?
In this instance, this will be 100% on the Flagstar Bank. It's their investment and their risk.
So regarding this like special use one, I know, for example, like my dad got letters from, I'm not sure, but it was a developer, and he was actually trying to build like a storage center, like by our house. I don't know if you guys talked about that one. But um, so, I'm sure you guys did. But um, so my question was, is like, does it go to you guys first, or does the developer go to you guys, and then if you guys approve it, and then, like, for example, he gets that pamphlet, like talking about it, and asks him to fill out a few questions, like if he would approve of this, and then he, of course, sent his comments back, like, will I see it in my backyard? So my question was, does it go to the people first, and they approve it, and then the developer comes to you, or is it the other way around?
I believe the application that you referred to was a proposed storage facility on Long Lake Road.
Yeah.
Which was, which was a conditional rezoning, which required the city council to take action on the zoning amendment. So in that instance, it went, it went to the planning commission first. The planning commission makes a recommendation, and then it goes to city council for ultimate consideration of approval or denial. In that instance, that was denied by city council, after a recommendation of approval by the planning commission.
So then, do the people like have, like, for example, like my dad filled out that pamphlet, does that have much of a, like, say, or, I guess?
So in that instance, and so for rezoning applications, by law, the cities are mandated to allow citizens to submit what's called a protest petition. And if it meets the, it meets the standards of being a valid protest petition, what that does is when it goes to city council, instead of being a simple majority vote of five.
Yep.
Excuse me, four, four out of seven, it needs a super majority of five. So that petition kicks it up, and makes it a little bit more difficult because it needs one more vote of city council.
Thank you.
I also, can I just add one more comment to the, I just want to add one more comment to your question on the conditional rezoning. That was a situation where, again, the law that applies to conditional rezoning allowed for some discretion. It had a public hearing attached to it, and that could have, and did end up in a no vote from city council, right? But again, remember, if it had a different law applied to it, like a by right. It wouldn't have mattered, right? Because remember, the by right means that it meets all of the ordinance requirements, and the discretion is gone.
Okay, so my question was, who facilitates the flow of new businesses in Detroit? And if it's like a new business that, like, say it's a restaurant that wants to come to Troy, and it doesn't match like the color scheme, I don't know if, like, there's a color scheme of Troy, but like, would that go to you, or like the?
You want me to fill this one?
Is this a DDA question?
Well, no, it's a design standards question.
It's a design standard.
Well, talk about the master plan. Because we have a master.
You're making me think tonight, everyone. This is great. So, so you're specifically referring to design of buildings, and so what some communities, what some communities do is they have very rigid design standards. And they've identified, they've identified the importance of design for their, for their community. So they've got a theme or a feel when you go into the community. In Troy's, and you identify that, that character, that feel that you want, you identify that in your master plan, you make it a priority, and then you implement your goals through the zoning ordinance. Troy has, we've seen a lot of development recently. You can drive around, you can see all the construction that's going on, which is, which is a good thing. And for the most part, the quality of the applications that we're getting is quite high. But there are, there are some instances where the design of buildings is, is just kind of.
Too much.
Well, it's just kind of mad, you know, it's, it's underwhelming. So, so what the planning commission start, what the planning commission did was initiate an effort to amend the zoning ordinance, like the laws, and strengthen the design standards. So it's not really prescriptive. Like, we don't have one form that we want every building to look like. We're really looking at elements that improve overall design in a general, in a general sense by, such as placing a building closer to the street, having windows and doors and glass so that you can engage the building, having quality materials such as, such as stone, and a brick, and glass, and metal versus man-made materials that are not, they're not as rich, and they're not as timeless. And so we're, we've got a draft, some draft language that we've looked at, at a previous meeting, and we'll be revisiting it again in April. If anyone wants to add on, piggyback on that, go for it.
I just wanted to point out, there's a, the city has a master plan that says, you know, this is a downtown area, and so there's a downtown development authority. So just like us here, who are a group of volunteers, there's another group of volunteers called the DDA. And so different areas within Troy have different, we call them neighborhood nodes, for example, and so we have different, within the master plan, we have different things that are identified with each of those areas. And I think that that also helps us. If you go back to the slide on this one, where you talk about.
This one?
Before this.
Before this?
I think so, yeah.
We have to.
I don't know, maybe after. There's somewhere where you talked about the, there, this one. So compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with the master plan. So we have to evaluate all of these. Sometimes we are the only body that looks at it, and then sometimes it requires council approval. So there are certain things that come in front of us, there are some things, some things that only even come in front of us, that go just to the planning department. So depending on what the complexity of the development, of the new development or the project is, it would go to a, it will go through the pipeline in different ways.
Okay, we'll take a couple more questions, and then we'll, yes.
So I was having a conversation with council member Ms. Howe earlier, and I was wondering, so it was basically just about the jurisdiction of this committee. So I noticed you said, like, in this case, Flagstar Bank had to pay 100% of it. And me and Claire were having a conversation about, so what, what type of committees, what type of companies come under jurisdiction of your plan, like approving it? Why does Flagstar Bank have to come to you for approval, if they are the one who are paying the whole financial burden? And does every company that plans a new, like, construction project have to come to you guys? Is there other bodies of, like, council committee members? So I was wondering if Claire or any other council member could answer this question. Thank you.
So do you want to answer?
Yeah, sure, okay.
Dazzle me.
So the reason why, even though it's 100% paid for by Flagstar Bank, it's their investment, the reason why they have to come before planning and city council for approval to build this is because even though they are paying for 100% of it, the impact of their building is felt by the community of Troy. And the community of Troy needs to make sure that developer and whatever they plan, and the impact of their building and their business, not only meets the laws of Michigan, of Troy, but also doesn't, for example, if meets our master plan, that it doesn't disturb or harm neighboring residential or other uses surrounding it. So this application was relatively straightforward, but sometimes, especially when it's like a commercial use right next to residential, or mixed use, have a lot more complexity to them. And this body, Planning Commission, we talked about last time, how this is the body where members of the public have more, more of a voice to voice how they feel. So this is kind of like, before this goes to council, because we're a recommending body, council's the one that ultimately approves of it. This is the one where if members of the public have concerns they think need to be addressed on the project, this is where, this is where they come to say their piece.
I think that was articulated really well. So just to add, just to add to that, the, in a nutshell, the Supreme Court of the United States in 1926 deemed that zoning was a valid police power. And following that, the state of Michigan authorized communities to establish regulations for regulating land use, which is zoning. And then they also required that this zoning shall be based on a master plan. So it's all, it's authorized and mandated by the state of Michigan. And then what Claire said, she nailed it. Great answer.
Oh, and I think you asked what other committees this would go before, and that really depends on the project. Most, I think, just come, I'm not sure, I think most just come for planning and city council. But if there's rezoning that needs to happen, I think that goes before the ZBA. And I think that for projects that have special traffic considerations, that might go to traffic committees, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so rezonies go before city council, their legislative decisions, because we're changing the law. Variances go before the zoning board of appeals. So if, if there's a minute, if there's a relief needed from the law, the applicant gets the relief through the zoning board of appeals. Claire mentioned something very important. One of the reasons that, that the planning commission and city council meetings and zoning board of appeals meetings are very important is they're public meetings. And it provides the opportunity, the public an opportunity to speak on applications. That's a very, that's a very important element in planning and zoning.
Okay, we'll take one last question. Yes.
I know earlier you talked about how you were required to take a course, or like over seven units, to learn about like planning and zoning and stuff, to join this council. And I was wondering if that applied to other cities councils, because like the same course you could use, and like you could apply to this city, and like maybe if you moved later, you could apply to a different city. And also, like, how long on average the courses took to take?
So the Citizen Planner course that is, was referred to, most of, it's, it's not required that our planning commission members take it, but most of our planning commissioners have taken it. A majority of the commissioners here have taken it, and three of them have completed their, their master citizen planner courses through the capstone presentation. That's Mr. Edmonds, Ms. Cooper, and Mr. Crandall, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
And most of the other, the planning commissioners have taken the seven credits. And they do it, well, I mean.
And you have to take continuing, you have to take continuing credits once you become a master planner. You have to take some credits every time.
And I'm not aware of other communities requiring the planning commission members do that. But it's, it's, we talk about best management practices. We, we want our commissioners to be trained and to be able to do their job effectively, although it's a volunteer job. And it just, I think, I think most planning commissioners will tell you when they attend the course, it's really well done, and they, it's enjoyable, but they learn a lot, take away a lot.
And it is portable. If I move to Bloomfield Hills or Birmingham, and I want to be a planning commissioner there, the course that I took is applicable.
And the other detail is the course actually can be taken in person? And I think it's a four-day class, is that what it is here?
It's seven units, two and a half days.
Two and a half day class.
You can also take them over time.
Right.
You can take them online or in person.
Right.
The other thing I was going to add is, anyone who is a resident of Troy and a citizen of the United States can volunteer for any border committee in the city. And that's how I started in 2002. And I've worked through all these different committees and landed in planning commission three years ago. So it's very possible that you can professionally, you can be a homemaker, and also, because they need people who are reflective of the community. That what's, that's what makes a democracy work, that the planning commission is reflective of the people that live in the community.
I just want to add one last thing. I know most people are seniors, but it's really, if you're a junior, and you want to be on planning commission or any other commission of the city, it's relatively easy to do so. There's an application on the City of Troy website, and you fill that out, and you, I think there's, you need like a lot of recommendation, an essay, and you choose a commission, and you just come, sit, you learn, understand, and it's interesting. So if anyone's interested, that's a junior, or sophomore, or anything.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your great questions. So I will close the public hearing at this time, bring it back to the table for any comments or additional questions or a resolution. Are you ready for a resolution? Mr. Edmonds.
Special use and preliminary site plan review, file number JPLN 2018. Proposed Flagstar Bank, private ATM, northwest corner Rochester, Long Lake, section 10, zone NNL, neighborhood node. NNL neighborhood node. Resolved, the planning commission has made a finding that the proposed Flagstar Bank drive up ATM and other improvements have met the following special use standards. Number one, through the use of predated and predated the requirement for a special use, the building has been operating as a bank with a drive-through. Number two, the improvement and expansion of the existing use is commercial in nature and fits with the existing commercial character of the property and surrounding area. Number three, the proposed improvement of the commercial use is consistent with the master plan for this area. Number four, the improvement and expansion of the existing use should have minimal impact on overall site traffic. Be advised, a result of special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Flagstar Bank drive up ATM northwest corner of Rochester and Long Lake at 5017 Rochester. Section 10, currently zoned NNL neighborhood node L district, be granted, subject to the following conditions. Number one, submit light fixtures and photometric plant prior to final site plan approval. And number two, obtain approval for canopy clearance height from the fire department prior to final site plan approval. I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Edmonds, seconded by Mr. Krent. Roll call please, Ms. Arneke.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zenzikus?
Yes.
Mr. Chagle?
Yes.
Mr. Hedyan?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Motion passes. Before we move to the next item on the agenda, we'll take a five minute break and anybody that wants their paper signed for your government class, you can have that signed.
I am, so, I'm the planning director, I'm happy to sign. We have assistant city attorney here, she's happy to sign. We have the planning commission chair, Mr. Hedyan, he's happy to sign. So I, whoever you want can sign. There's a very interesting speaker coming up, Ron Wilson from Hotel Investment Services Incorporated. It's not going to be a long presentation, it's going to be very interesting on, on the hotel industry in Troy and some of the demands of, placed on, on it by new applications. It's going to be pretty interesting. I encourage you to stay, but if he wants to sign and get you out of here, we'll sign and get you out of here. So five minutes.
Ms. Howe?
Who wants to, who wants to?
Ms. Howe?
Ms. Howe? Ms. Howe?
Moving on to item number nine on the agenda, hotels in the city of Troy, presentation by Mr. Ron Wilson of Hotel Investment Services Inc., Mr. Sodan.
Yeah, I'll do a very brief introduction. So there's, since the ordinance was amended, was comprehensively rewritten in 2011, we've had a number of new hotels that were constructed and there's been a recent uptick in hotel applications. March 13th, 2018, planning commission reviewed and approved a true hotel on Maple Road and at that meeting, it was suggested that we bring in an expert from the hotel industry to attend an upcoming meeting to discuss the hotel industry. And about a year ago, myself and Glenn Lapin and Mark Miller met with Ron Wilson from Hotel Investment Services Incorporated to discuss the hotel industry in Troy and trends and what we can expect, an, an uptick in hotels to, what impact that would have potentially on occupancy rates in Troy. And I contacted Mr. Wilson and he suggested that we prepare an STR report, which analyzes all the hotels, how they're, how they're operating in the city of Troy. And every, every hotel in Troy, except the Somerset Inn, participated. I, I attached Mr. Wilson's credentials to the packet, you've all had a chance to review them. I'm not going to go over them now, but with all that being said, I'd like to introduce Ron Wilson.
That was quite a civics lesson that we all enjoyed. Let me give you another bit of information that will serve you well the rest of your life. It's real simple. This thing right here, what is it called from the students?
Oh, yeah.
You're all wrong. It's called a lectern. You stand on a podium, you speak from a lectern. You'll remember that and you'll go places. That's all I got to say. Drop it, walk out. Yeah, I'll speak up with the microphones here. So, I'm in the hotel business, I've always been in the hotel business, all I've ever done is the hotel business, my entire adult life and even prior to that. So about what I'm going to speak to comes from a point of passion and a point of knowledge about what's going on. And the question that I was asked to speak about today is a, is a critical question because of what can happen to a community when you get this decision wrong and what happens when you get this decision right. The hotel industry, like most industries, was affected during the, the great recession of 2009. Everything just imploded, automotive imploded and, and there was a lot of foreclosures, bankruptcies, that sort of thing. And since that time, the economy has recovered and hotels have recovered along with it and everything is going along quite well. As a matter of fact, for 96 consecutive months, do the math, that's eight years. For eight years, every single month, an index that's very important in this industry called RevPAR, revenue per available room, has increased. That's never happened before, ever. So RevPAR, revenue per available room, we'll go into that a little bit when we get into this, into this chart right here, has increased for 96 months. The likelihood of it continuing to increase is pretty good. One of the reasons, the tax reform that was just recently enacted, that's putting more money in companies' pockets, individuals' pockets as well, that's great. Companies are the primary demand generators for hotels as it relates to Troy. This, I live in this community, my company's in this community, I've been here for a very, very, very long time. We're not a destination resort, we're not Mackinac Island. So we depend on business. There is quite a good leisure component to this community, it's a business-driven community. So the, the companies that have more money like to spend that money and part of that spending is on training or product development. All these things require travel, so that's a good sign. The next thing that I want to speak to is the concept of Airbnb. And I know everyone, whenever I speak about the industry, everyone asks me about Airbnb, what's going on, what's happening with that, is that threat to the conventional hotel industry. Airbnb is, has, has quickly become a, just another hotel chain. The people that rent out their spare bedroom, that's going away and it's going away at light speed. Very few people, maybe some of the, the high school students in here might not mind staying in someone's bedroom when they go to the next room and share a bathroom, but virtually every adult doesn't want to do that and especially if you're there on business. So what's happening with Airbnb, it's becoming like VRBO, vacation rentals by owner, to an extent, but Airbnb is becoming a conduit for people to put non-owner occupied lodging or real estate in a pool to be rented by a controlled party. And that is Airbnb, might as well be Hilton or Holiday Inn or Marriott or, or, you know, any, any of them. So the, what's incumbent upon a city, on a municipality, is how you treat Airbnb, that these Airbnb facilities that are non-owner occupied, and that's really where it's going, need to be regulated the same way you regulate a hotel. You, you need to make sure you get out ahead of this and there's probably a lot of best practices around the country. Troy is not as affected as let's say San Francisco or Miami or Boston or New York would be, but it's, it's in this community, it's in this community to stay, make sure you get out ahead of it, that non-owner occupied dwellings that are commercially put for lodging fall under the same requirements as a lodging facility. That's just good for safety and, and some other things. So Airbnb, the proliferation of Airbnb, I'm all for it. I like it. Anything that gets people traveling is good for the business, it's good for business. So as a lifelong hotelier, a person who owns hotels, develops hotels, consults on hotels, I got no problem with Airbnb, as long as they play by similar rules that everyone has to, house has to play by. So, the, for hotel development, you need capital and you need loans, people to lend money to build it, because most people can't build a hotel for cash. And the financial markets are starting to tighten up a little bit. After the recession, they were extremely tight and then they loosened up dramatically, especially as interest rates plummeted, and that led to everyone building hotels. There was pent up demand for hotel rooms because it takes, as this body knows, it takes a while to get a hotel from idea to, to opening and through the whole process. So as, as hotels now starting to catch up with the demand, the increase in demand, the capital markets are getting a little concerned, is there too much hotel activity going on? Are we going to end up with a lot of foreclosed, closed real estate? So the underwriting requirements are getting a little bit tighter, a little bit more equity is required, the spreads on, on the debt instruments are increasing a little bit more and so it's getting more expensive to borrow the money, you have to have better sponsorship or net worth to do that, so the, the capital markets are tightening up a little bit. Not a lot, it's still, you can still get plenty of money to, to finance hotels. The one form of capital that is getting extraordinarily scarce right now is human capital. It is really tough to find employees. Hotels are, are high labor users and there, a lot of people that are in this room are, are target for labor, younger people that want to have entry level jobs into our industry and it is not quite impossible, but you can see it from standing right here, to hire people, to hire good people to do that. So for the students, it's a seller's market, so to speak. You, you can command things that you heretofore maybe couldn't as much, but the human resources is probably going to be the number one limiting factor on the development of hotels. You just can't find the people, it's very, very difficult. It's even more difficult, we operate three hotels on islands. We have two on Mackinac Island and we have one on Drummond Island. You got to bring everyone in and through H2B visas or J1s and there's all kinds of creative ways to get employees there. Troy is a little bit more, it's less in a way that, there's a lot of residential component here, there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of kids trying to find entry level jobs. That makes Troy really an ideal place to do this and we're not as constricted here as we are in some other places to do that. Costs, development costs are rising, the cost of construction is getting more expensive, that becomes a limiting factor. Financially, these things have to make sense to build a hotel. So when the cost of construction, they're suffering the same thing, having talented tradespeople that can build the hotels and it's hard to find those. So that's a limiting factor. The Detroit hotel supply is increasing, the supply of hotels, of hotel rooms, is increasing at about a rate of 3%. That's a little bit, it's a tick higher than what it has been, it's typically been about a 2%, where total inventory has increased about 2% year over year, it's at 3%. As you know, and, and we saw previously on the screen, there's a lot of hotel activity. Detroit inundated with new hotels, all the suburbs hotels. I'm part of that, I'm developing hotels, actually around the country. So 3% is an okay number, wouldn't want to see it go much higher than that, historically it stays around 2%. Some say that we're not overbuilt in hotels, we're just under demolished in hotels. Meaning that some hotels, and we've all stayed in them, really have passed their prime and need to, need to be turned into a sidewalk or something, crumbled up and recycled to do that. So there's, the useful life, even though these buildings theoretically can last 100 years, most of them really shouldn't last 100 years and do that. So with that, why don't you grab this, because I'm going to...
Sure. Just let me know what's...
Yeah, why don't we go to the first slide? This is Smith Travel Research, this is a, a compilation of all the, all the activity of the hotels in Troy with the exception, except, exception of the Somerset Inn. You choose to report to Smith Travel Research, or what are commonly called STAR reports. It's, it's totally voluntary. Every franchise requires that you report to Smith Travel Research because it's the arbiter, it's the gatekeeper of all hotel statistics and it's kept confidential, so I can never find out, no matter what I do or what reports I pull, what a particular hotel is doing. They set it up so statistically you can never get there with that. But what I want to point out is, in all of this mumbo jumbo here, is, well, you can see by these, these here, occupancy, average daily rate, revenue per available room or RevPAR, that's simply... that's simply occupancy times the average daily rate. So the idea of RevPAR is that it's around 70% at $80, or 75% at $81. All you do is multiply those two numbers together, and you get RevPAR, and that tells you to do it. So this is the apples-to-apples thing. So what this means is the revenue per available room per night that a hotel is generating, okay? So for all the hotels in Troy, in January of 2018, the average revenue generated per room in a hotel was $78.51. That's what that means. So it was 64% occupancy, at a rate of $122.54, multiply those two together, get $78.51. That's how the math works. All right. What I want to point out here is really, this is all interesting, if you like to get in the weeds, you really want to just focus on this column right here. And the numbers to look at is over since 2012, so in 2012, the city ran 65.5% occupancy, and so it goes down to where last year, it ran 73.6% occupancy, okay? That's good. Let's look at the rates. Started at $97, it's now at $117 average rate. That's good, especially if you own the hotel, maybe not so much if you're paying for the hotel. So those two blended together get you this one single apples-to-apples number, is the RevPAR, or Revenue Per Available Room, started out at $63, and is now at $86, okay? Now down here, we have supply, how many hotel rooms are in the marketplace. Each hotel, so a 100-room hotel in one year has 36,500 room nights available, okay? So in Troy, not counting the Somerset, because they don't report, in 2012, we had 600,000 room nights available, gross room nights available. We now have almost 800,000 room nights available to do that. That's a 32% increase. The amount of demand to fill those hotel rooms has gone up 48%, from 393,000 to 584,000. So what this means is, supply is increasing, but demand is increasing faster than supply. Yes, ma'am?
But according to occupancy in 2018, you were only at 73% occupancy, so that means there's still room?
Yes. 73% is a really good number...
But there's still room?
There's still room?
Even though supply and demand have increased, there's still, okay?
Yeah, there's a question, am I allowed to take a question?
We'll hold off on the question until they allow them to.
Okay, so there's more room for that, but there's a theoretical, you'll never get to 100% occupancy. That's a bad thing. It means you're not charging enough to do that, and that's called yield management. So most hotels, the average hotel kind of nationwide is running about 66% occupancy, and a break-even calculation for a hotel is, again, depending on the rate, is probably somewhere in the 63%, 64% range, to be at a break-even at a given market rate to do that. So yes, there's more capacity here, but in theory, it's very difficult to get there because, and I'll show on a further slide, you're full Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so you can't get a room, but on Sunday, or Sat, you know, no one's here. And so that brings that occupancy level down to do that. And we'll, it's a great question, we'll address that in just a second. So the RevPAR has gone up 36% from here to here, and supply has gone up 32%, and demand has gone up 48%. That's good. I mean, that's good if you're a community, that's good if you own a hotel, that's good if you're staying in, it's just good. Troy's in a very good, on a kind of a 10,000-foot flyover, good, really good. This is a good market, and it has room for more hotels. If this number was more like 2012, I'd be a little nervous, and if it was heading the wrong, if we were heading back to 2012 numbers, I wouldn't be telling you it's good. I would say it's time to kind of, let's close the door to do that. This slide shows the percentage change from the previous year. Again, we just want to look here, you know, if you're interested in the minutia, that's great, but what this is saying is occupancy has increased over 2012, has gone up 4.2%. Over 2013, 2.3%, was flat, et cetera. So 2017 increase over 2016 was 5%, not, yeah, 5% increase. So the average daily rate, the rate that's charged, you can see the increases here, it's starting to go down a little bit, the rate. So as you get a little bit more competition, the rate gets a little tighter, just economics 101. The more you have out there selling, the price is going to come down. So the RevPAR, this is really what you want to look at here. The Revenue Per Available Room has increased, has had a really, really nice increase. This is above the national average. Most communities would kill to have these numbers right here. And typically, what we're seeing in forecasting in different parts of the country is anywhere from 0 to 3% increase in RevPAR. Troy's at 6.5. That's really good. That's double what is going on in the rest of the country, by and large. So supply, supply has increased, here's how much the supply of new hotel rooms. You can see the numbers, last year, because the last couple of years, there's been the opening of the Hilton Garden Inn, the Hampton Inn, down on Stevenson, the Marriott products, and they're, all kind of came online right in here. And you see this big jump from these fairly low numbers to almost 10%, almost 8%. But gosh, build it and they'll come. Look at, look at the demand. The demand went up 10% when the supply went up 9.6. Demand goes up 13% when it went up 7.6. That's what we call in the business, unaccommodated demand. That's the build it and they'll come stuff. Means if they're putting those room nights, those room nights were going to some other community, and now they're coming to Troy. So yes, the amount of corporate demand generators have increased, but we're now pulling back in more people that have left the community, because they couldn't get rooms on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night, because everything was full. So this is what you like to see. You like to see this number bigger than this number, and it is, check the good box. That's a good thing right there. Okay, next slide. This is kind of the same thing, it's just done in a slightly different way that makes it easy to look at, supply and demand by month, by year, and it gives a total here, so this is just another way to say that supply went up 7.6% last year, and, I'm sorry, yeah, supply went up 7.6, demand went up 13%. So this is, the previous slide just shown a different way. Next slide. This is a pretty interesting slide. It's rare that you get to see this. This slide shows really good things. This shows a 12-month moving average in a rear, so the previous 12 months. What is the lowest 12-month moving average, and where is the highest 12-month moving average? And generally, what you want to see is this box, which indicates that the previous 12-month moving average of occupancy, the lowest, was 65.3% back in '13. So the 12 months before that date equaled 65.3%. And the highest 12 months going backwards, any 12 months going backwards, was this January, '73. So what you want to see is, you want to see the low kind of at the high end of the chart, meaning the old part of the chart, you want to see the high at the bottom end of the chart. That means things were bad and they're getting better, or things were good and they're getting great. So when you see all these boxes where the low is at the top of the chart to the left, and the high is to the bottom of the chart, that's all really good, and that's the way this chart plays out. So again, RevPAR, when this first starts, these reports only go back so many years, I mean, it goes back a lot of years, but they only put so many years here. This is perfect. You got RevPAR of the preceding 12 months, the lowest it's ever been was January, the first month of this report, and we're one month away from the highest 12-month trailing average. That's really good. So this is a great slide. When you see those kind of numbers to do that, and supply, as long as supply has the same thing, the box is up high for low, down for good, you want to make sure demand is doing the same thing, which it is, and the previous slides have shown that out. This is another way of looking at the same chart, and you will go brain-dead and asleep if I explain this, but it's all the same stuff, the next one you can go to also. Yeah, this is good, stay here. This has a little more substance to it. What this tells us is, for the last 12 months, what is the occupancy by day of the week? This gets back to your point, is the lowest occupancy is Sunday night in the city of Troy. Makes sense, most of you don't travel on Sunday to go to conferences or whatever. But starting Monday, 77%, 85%, 85% on Wednesday. Wednesday is typically the peak travel day of the week for corporate business, 72%. What's interesting here is Friday and Saturday nights in Troy are really good. So something's going on that people, typically that means you're getting a lot of wedding traffic, or there's some other type of social demand generator, because there's no corporate demand generator on a Friday and Saturday. So it's either concerts, weddings, events, something could be happening at a sporting event around, we have to take questions later, I was told. So this being in the high 60s and low 70s, that's really good. I mean, that's showing a strong hotel economy in the city of Troy to do that. Average rate, as you can see during peak demand, you pay peak prices, during slow demand, you pay lower prices. Economy 101 there. And RevPAR is the combination of these two, shows the same thing. This just shows a, to look back just the last three years. So that's, okay, next. Don't want to go through this one, I think that's, oh, keep going, keep going, keep going. Oh, stop. Here's all the hotels that reported. So as far as I can tell, Somerset's the only one missing from there.
Do you know why?
They don't, it's an independently-owned hotel, it's not part of a franchise, and they just chose not to report, so there's nothing to read into that, either way. There's a lot of hotels that don't participate. It's silly not to, but it's, it means absolutely nothing as far as, oh, that means that. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Yes, sir?
Yeah. My question was the timeframe. So you started in 2012, went to 2018, positive metrics, but that's a period of strong economic growth. So if you went back further, would you see a different pattern?
Yeah, that's a great question. What would we see if we went back further than '13? Because obviously, these reports have been around for 25 years, so all this data is available. What you would see is in early 2000, there was a recession in early 2000, and then there would be a similar climb up to around 2008 is when Michigan kind of dropped off the edge of the cliff, and the rest of the country about 2009. And so you would have seen this great rise, just like here, but then it would have fallen off a cliff in 2000, late 2008, 2009. I mean, it was just ugly.
So the underlying economy is a key driver?
Absolutely, absolutely. And another question I get is, well, if you have all these hotels, and then another recession hits, what happens to the hotels? Do they become something else? Are we going to have all these vacant things, or what are they going to be? They're going to be hotels. The new buildings, except for the ones that really were torn down, and the real estate's more valuable for another use, they're going to still be hotels, someone else will own them. So the current owners, if they can't, if they're not liquid enough to keep them going, then they will lose them back to the lender, to the bank, just like you lose your home if you don't take, if you don't make the mortgage payments. The bank owns it, they sell it at a lower price typically, and so the new owner comes in and has a lower basis, that it is easier to compete in a lower-based economy to do that.
Mr. Ilson?
Mr. Ilson, assuming you're going to build a hotel in Troy, and you've just reviewed all this data that you're projecting, how many more hotels do you think Troy could sustain today, if you were to build one, or two, or three?
Yeah, it depends on the type of hotel. Right now, most of the activity in Troy is limited service, or what we call focused service, limited service being a Hampton Inn, a True, a Holiday Inn Express and Suites, Fairfield Inn, that would be limited service. A focused service would be, which is a step up, a Hilton Garden Inn, a Marriott Courtyard, a Hyatt Place, that, which has some form of food and beverage that you pay for, lunch, dinner, a little bit...
But I would assume that you would make a choice through all these options available, if you were going to put a hotel in here?
Right.
So if you could pick your own hotel, would you build it, knowing that there may be more coming, or would you think there's more coming, or would you say, it's saturated, I'm going to go somewhere else?
Yeah, based on everything I see right now, I'd build another hotel in Troy in a second, absolutely.
How many would you build? How much would the market sustain, do you think?
Yeah, and it depends on the type of hotel, and it gets a little bit in the minutia of saturation of a particular brand versus having a good diversity of brands. What you want to be careful of is not having too much of one brand, of one family of brands, and there's been a lot of consolidation in the hotel industry like others. So Marriott now, that acquired Starwood, has, I don't know, 40 brands under the Marriott flag.
I'm taking that into consideration.
Yeah.
In your personal judgment, how many do you think they could accommodate, depending on the niches you think might need to be filled?
I would say, given the types of hotels that are being built, and that would likely be built in this area, and in this community, I would say, and given a size of approximately 100 rooms, probably another three or four hotels would be reasonable. Because you have to understand, as new hotels come on, some of the older will start to move down the food chain, or simply move out, because they can't compete anymore. So it's not an absolutely, everyone gets stacked on and on and on, people are falling down off the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Ilson.
So, couple questions. So as more hotels move in, and others fall to the bottom of the food chain, right, because they can't hang on and they can't compete, then I'm assuming those just become vacant buildings?
Well, they, what happens mostly to hotels, because they're generally in pretty good locations, they get tore down and they become something else. If you remember, like at Telegraph and 12 Mile, there was a big Ramada Hotel there, and that got tore down, and now it's in LA Fitness, and shopping, and other things, so...
Okay, so you think someone will buy the property?
Yeah.
And demolish it, and bring in something that would be...
Generally, that's what happens, because the real estate is too valuable to just, and especially in good economic times. And everyone thinks about, well, what happens when it's a bad time? Well, bad times are this long, and good times are this long. So you have to plan and think about the good times, not just... So you have to plan and think about the good times, not just every little, I'm not going to plan a vacation because I might be sick. Well, you're not sick all the time, you're well most of the time.
Right. So then my other question is, you talked about, it depends on the type of hotel. So if you think that an additional three or four hotels would be reasonable within the city, of those three or four, I mean, how many should be maybe an extended stay type hotel? How many of those three or four should be more of a luxury model instead of a business traveler class?
Yeah. In this market, it's going to be more towards the economy, if I can say that, the Hampton Inns, Trues, that sort of thing, and extended stays and focus service, which would be Hilton Garden Inns and Marriott Courtyards, that sort of thing. I don't think Troy can support another Marriott, the Troy Marriott type thing. The cost to do that is just astronomical, and the amount of labor it takes to staff that is astronomical. And there has to be a significant, there's not enough convention or conference demand in Troy to do that. A study was done by the Metro Detroit Visitors Convention Bureau, and to determine if a conference center could be built in this area, and the answer was no, it's not economically feasible. And actually, some, I don't know how many years ago, I spoke before the same planning commission about that same subject, and I said, my answer then is my answer no. Now, there's no cost justification to do that. Conference centers do not make money. And so they have to be subsidized. A standalone conference center I'm speaking about. So a hotel with a large conference facility, those are so expensive to build now and to operate that they have to be in a pretty significant demand generating community or gateway communities, like Houston, San Francisco, Boston, Denver, that sort of thing. So that's why these types of properties that you're seeing being built now, companies like them because they're cheaper for their employees to stay there. The developers like them because they're cheaper to build and they're cheaper to operate. They take less bodies because you're not having all the amenities there. But I don't think, I don't think there's a need for a high-end, full-service, like a Hilton or another Marriott or a Hyatt type property would highly unlikely, highly unlikely that that would ever be built in Troy, unless there was some other force that came to the forefront that would create the demand for that. There's enough of those in the greater southeast Michigan area, and they're just incredibly expensive to build. I've built them and operated them, and they're very expensive.
So why should I consider as a planning commissioner, why should I consider taking what little land we have left and putting a hotel on it versus trying to see if that land couldn't be used for some of the different types of housing that would create residency in the community?
Yeah, what we saw, it's a good question. What we saw, all I can respond to that question is by the numbers. And what we saw is that we're getting, by building more hotels, we're getting more guests, which is more commerce, which is more taxes, which is more people eating in restaurants, filling up their gas tanks, shopping, whatever. So think of a hotel that has a hundred rooms, that has the gross potential of thirty-six thousand five hundred room nights. They're generally on average going to rent about twenty-eight thousand room nights or twenty-seven thousand room nights a year. And there's approximately 1.2 people in each of those rooms. That's thirty thousand people that are now in your community buying stuff and also tending to business. So what was interesting is, yes, the supply went up, but the demand went up faster than the supply. That means that the commercial base is utilizing that supply and wants that supply. So we're providing a resource, or the people that are doing this are providing a resource to the business segment in the city of Troy, which business begets business begets business. So if you want more business, hotels are one way to attract more business, because businesses look at the hotel supply to determine can they do their business in that community. Extended stay, you asked about extended stay, there's absolutely more room for extended stay. We have several of those properties, and they're big demand generators. And they fill a certain niche where we have guests that stay years, actually, and many that stay months and months and months.
Mr. Ilson.
Yeah, obviously, you could talk at length about all these little pieces, and I appreciate you doing so, but I've got a couple of quick questions you hopefully give me a quick short answers to. One is, I want your opinion of the Met property, and I want your opinion of putting a hotel on the Civic Center site.
I'm not in favor of either.
Okay. That's it, thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Ilson.
I'd like to hear the justification.
The Civic Center property, I think that needs to be a hotel that has to do justice to the site and the site plan that I've seen. This is a personal opinion. I think what actually needs to be there and what can afford to be there are two different things. And I would be prepared for some type of subsidy or deal or abatements or something if that happened.
But all those people that are going to be in those new, if it is ever approved, the new high rises, even in the cottage homes that were proposed, they're going to have a lot of kind of guests. They're going to want them to stay very close to where they're at.
Yeah.
That doesn't have any impact?
Full disclosure, I'm not in favor of the Civic Center development.
I was just trying to determine your justification for that.
I, so I am prejudiced. I admit my prejudice. I'm not a fan of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ilson.
A notion that I've heard over the years, I've heard people comment that, boy, it'd be great if Troy had a five-star hotel. So could you explain what is a five-star hotel? How many five-star hotels are there in Michigan, and is it realistic to anticipate Troy having a five-star hotel?
Wow, I'm trying to think of any five, the Townsend's four-star, the Royal Park Hotel is a four-star. I developed the Royal Park Hotel with the ownership group and opened it, ran it for a while. One of my other hotels that I have have developed and operate, the Inn at St. John's in Plymouth is a four-star hotel. Five-star hotels, I don't think we have any in the state.
MGM.
MGM, yeah, okay. I was just going to say, a casino hotel can pull that off because they have other revenue sources to make up for the enormously expensive cost to run all the services that you need to run in a five-star hotel, such as cook order, twenty-four-hour room service. So everything that's on your menu has to be available at three-thirty in the morning.
So the Aloft, at the former, what, that's a four-star?
My guess is that, it could be four, it's a three or a four. Alofs are generally three-star hotels by design. But that's a gorgeous building and development there, it's fabulous. So casinos are generally the ones that pull that off as a hook to get you in, and then they can sell it at a market rate where if I did it, the rate would be a rate that no one would pay.
Mr. Faizan.
Yeah. Could you go back to your slide? It was the second one you did, when you did the percentage increases.
Yes, right there.
And I thought you made a comment, so I'm looking at the supply row there, and that five-point-eight.
This is the average.
That's the average of all the years.
Correct.
Did you mention earlier that a sustainable rate was more like two or three percent?
Three percent is typically a, historically what we've seen is a three percent increase in supply. That's sort of the norm.
So again, I was just going to ask, is that then an argument that we've got too much supply? Again, that's one data point. I know you've got other data points that may make a different argument, but is that?
No, because of this. This is saying that even though, as fast as you're adding, as fast as we're adding hotel rooms, they're being used even faster. So this is a really good thing. If that number's high and this number's even higher, that's great. You've got a lot of good things happening in your hotel community, which we talked about, the ripple effect of all that.
Yeah, and my last point is, my point is the sustainability question.
Yeah, at some point, the market will correct itself at some point. Developers just don't develop forever, and the financial institutions will be a limiting factor on that, and the human capital will be a limiting factor on that to do it, because you, the people that you're getting, you're paying a lot more for them, which erodes the bottom line, which erodes the return, which erodes the risk-reward formula. So it kind of fulfills itself. I don't have a hotel in Troy, I don't have a dog in this fight, so I'm giving you my professional opinion.
You mentioned that before the meeting, yep.
I would not hesitate to approve good hotel brands by good developers that are good operators. I would not have a problem with that.
The latest hotel that we just approved was the True Hotel, and one of the things that the applicant stated was that if anything ever should go bad there economically, that because it was, it had elevators, that it could become a senior housing facility.
Yeah, that's never going to happen. It's going to be, I mean, in theory, could it happen? Yes. Does it happen? Yes, but not to new hotels or newer hotels. It's typically somewhere down the food chain in its life. That will always be a hotel. It may just be owned by somebody else with a lower basis for you.
So one more, I guess, question slash comment. So we have the uptick after 2011, and hotels were by rights. So if you met the criteria of the zoning ordinance, we would get approval by the planning commission. The planning commission recognized that there's this influx, so they were concerned about the quality of the product. Not that it was a poor quality that we were seeing, but they wanted to raise the bar so that moving forward, the quality of these developments was higher. So they're now special uses, they have to meet the special use standards. You heard earlier on in the meeting, we're introducing stronger design standards. So the quality of these buildings and these developments is going to continue to improve. So what do you think of that strategy? I mean, we're basically essentially mandating the quality of all development improved, but also including hotels.
I think that's terrific. Anything you can do to up the bar on the quality of the hotel being built, I'm a big, I'm in favor of that. And you can get down to minutia of what we call STC ratings between the walls. We've all been in hotel rooms and heard sports center in the next room at a time we didn't want to hear a sports center and heard it very clearly. So how walls are engineered, floor-to-floor, and how HVAC systems, those ubiquitous PTAC units, those things under the window that no one can sleep when they're on, there's better systems. And some of the developers in this area, Mike Cusa, for instance, when he did the Hilton Garden Inn, he put in what's called a VTAC unit, much quieter, but he didn't have to do that, and it cost him about a thousand dollars a room more to do it, but it's a much better system, and that's just upping the ante to do that. One thing that I want to talk about of why a lot of these economy and focus service, limited service hotels are moving into Troy is, I've been in Troy a long, long time, and Troy did not welcome limited service hotels for a very long time. That's why you see all the hotels that were built south of Fourteen Mile on Stevenson. That was the closest spot to Troy. Then the zoning changed, and now all that demand is seeking a supply, and people are, guess what, building the supply that the demand is seeking. So Troy in some ways is catching up to where it should have been a long time ago.
Yeah, Ms. Cooper.
So I have a couple of questions. One, when we talk about the five-star, what about a boutique hotel?
Boutique hotels are very cool to do.
Is Troy?
Troy, there needs to be, there needs to be something to make that work. So downtown New York just works automatically, or Fisherman's Works works automatically. I'm thinking where Kmart is and with Somerset, depending on what happens in there, something really boutiquey and cool could, I don't know where that land is going, but there could be room for a really cool little boutiquey kind of thing there. And Aloft tries to grab a little bit of that, and that's, I like that flag, I think that's a good idea to do that.
That segues to my next question. We approved True at our last meeting, but there had been another hotel several years ago that was approved there. Why do hotels get approval and then not get built? Because we do have an Aloft that came before us that we approved, and it hasn't gotten built.
That one was in the PNC, they had a zoning prohibition on the land, and so it couldn't be built even if they had all the money in the world.
What kind of prohibition?
There was a deed, not zoning, a deed restriction, I think, of that hotel. Someone didn't do the due diligence all the way down to the last page and found out that...
Not on direct.
No, no. It had nothing to do with planning, it had to do with due diligence of deed restrictions on the site. That went with the site. I don't know all the details, but that absolutely...
What would, well, consider the True, before the True, there was another hotel approved there, why do people put in applications, get them approved, and then walk away?
Yeah. I know a little bit about that site, that's, I think you're talking about Mike Cusa's site on fifteen and Stevenson. He actually hired us to do the feasibility study for that site, and we recommended that not be done, and that it was not the right site for a Hilton Garden Inn, so he pulled the plug on us.
And my last question, what does STR stand for? It's a London?
Smith Travel Research. Smith Travel Research. Randy Smith started the company thirty-five years ago when this goes on.
Mr. Stenzig.
Thank you.
I was curious, we've seen a large influx of apartments in Troy, and I was curious, is there a correlation from your research to, you have a lot of apartments being built and planned and completed?
There's no correlation that I'm aware of in my industry. I only do hotels, so I don't know about the apartment industry, but from a correlation of anything that anyone has tried to tie hotels to apartments, I'm not aware of anything other than the Airbnb thing we talked about previously.
Excuse me.
So earlier you made a comment about you had, you know, no problem with having hotels come in that were good brands by good operators. How do we know? How do we know?
Good question.
Because the person who's coming in front of us is the architect and the developer and the civil engineer, and how do we know?
Call me. I'll tell you.
They're usually looking at me to come to a decision same evening.
Let me give you, let me give you some rules of thumb on this. Generally, someone who has a history of building tier-one hotels, think anything, the big three, IHG, which is...
International Hotel Group.
Intercontinental Hotel Group. That's otherwise known as Holiday and Family Hotels, Marriott and Hilton. Those, anything in those three families, you're good. Then there's sort of quasi-second tiers, not that Hyatt Place is a second tier, they just don't have anything but Hyatt Place in that second tier, which is being built in Royal Oak. And that's a great brand as well. And if there were Hyatt Place wanting to be built in Troy, which there wouldn't be because I negotiated that franchise agreement and signed an area of protection, that Troy would not have a Hyatt Place. So that's a great brand. There's certain other brands that are good brands, but they're not the tier-one brands. So any IHG, Hilton, Marriott, those family brands, good to go. And they have standards of, they vet their developers, they vet their finances, and they have standards they have to bill to, and they're inspected and required and re-inspected and to do that. If you want to learn about a developer, find out what hotels he or she is doing, go on tripadvisor.com and just look at the reports on... Go on TripAdvisor.com and just look at the reports on their hotels, and that'll tell you what kind of operator. The public is the best arbiter of success or failure in a hotel.
Brent, is, when we have a hotel application come before us, is there a way that you can provide like a biography on the developer and give us an idea of...
Yes.
The ones that are active in this community, Mike Kuzo, Kenny Kuzo, Basil Bacall, they're good guys. They do good stuff, and they're good operators.
Just back to that, I think you mentioned, good operator was thinking about putting a Hilton on that site at 15 and Stevenson. Then had you do a feasibility study and opted not to do it. So, are you typically doing feasibility studies for these hotels?
Yes, we...
But you do it after the site plan gets approved?
It depends on...
And I'm asking because you had the two pieces you said were important, but that could have been a failed development, right? We had a good operator, a good brand, but feasibility says, showed it.
Yeah, it showed that a different hotel was a higher and better use. So, would it work? Yeah. Would something else work better? Yes. So, we, part of my company, we're primarily, we develop and manage hotels around the country. We do a lot of feasibility studies to help people figure out because you really need someone who operates and develops hotels to understand how to do a feasibility on a hotel. So, a lot of the local developers here use us to, we're not the only one that does this sort of stuff, but it's part of it.
Going back, I thought I read someplace, I don't know if it was on the front page or something, but that Troy could sustain 5,800 rooms. Is that, am I wrong in that? And that we currently have 2,500? Is that not true? Was that in your memo?
That was the last developer.
That was the last developer.
Said 5,000.
He said that. That was just his assertion.
Yeah. I don't have any empirical data to support that.
So, within the hotel industry, generally speaking, what percentage are being financed by banks versus private equity groups?
Most all of new development is being financed by banks with some SBA support in there. There are some institutional debt funds that are being tapped, but far and away, or life companies, to do that, far and away, they're being done by mostly local banks, meaning Michigan banks. There's some lenders. Not all banks do hotel rooms. Comerica won't touch a hotel, though they've done a couple. But TCF, they do hotels all day long. Flagstar, they do hotels. But they're an arbiter too, because they look at the underwriting. They look at the strength of the deal. They look at the feasibility study. They look at the operator. They look at the brand. They understand the market. And then they make a decision on whether to lend capital or how to price that capital and how much equity is required. So, there's a lot of checks and balances on overbuilding. Does overbuilding happen? Yes, but it usually only manifests itself when there's a dip in the economy. So, no one purposely builds hotels in a bad economy. You just don't do that. You build in a good economy, and bad things happen, and then you ride that out or don't ride it out, and then you come out the other side. So, I understand the concern. I, the people that are developing hotels in this community and the kind of hotels they're developing, I don't think you have anything to worry about. And I'm happy to talk, come back, and look at these, to go through this once a year if you want, because I don't want to see the industry hurt. I don't want to see my community hurt. I've lived here 35 years, and my business is here. So, but I have no product here. I don't have it.
Is the hotel industry cyclical where you can predict that? Let's say if you take out the 2009 recession, and you can predict that cycle? And if so, where are we in that cycle?
That's a great question. I want the answer too. Hotels generally follow the greater economic cycles, the ups and flows to do that. Your second part of your question, where we are in that cycle, I mean, that's anyone's crystal ball to look at that. Everyone thought that 2015 was the top of the curve. You better sell if you want to sell. No, it's just going down from there. And the transaction activity in 2015 was off the chart from buy-sell, mergers, that sort of thing. 16 got better, and, but everyone that wanted to buy and sell bought and sold. 17 got better. 18 getting better. And so, I think there's some, there's some things going on. The tax break is a really big deal, and because it affects corporate America, and what affects corporate America affects hotels. So, it affects the autos, and we're, in southeast Michigan, to an extent, you can look at oil prices. And as oil prices go, goes the autos. As autos go, goes pretty much everyone else, including hotels. But those fundamentals from energy costs are, if price gets up here, we just produce more from fracting and other methods, and the price comes down. And you just see that equilibrium going on in the marketplace. And SUVs and F-150 trucks get sold, and automakers make record profits because it's a good thing. So...
It's interesting you have a theological degree.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, it's good to have a well-rounded education. Too much time on my end, perhaps.
So, this isn't really a question, but I'm just gonna tell you, and maybe you'll find it helpful. Maybe you won't. When I looked at the report that was attached to the packet that I got this evening for the Planning Commission, for me, that was a bunch of wah-wah-wah-wah. It meant, it meant nothing. It meant absolutely nothing to me. It would have been helpful, maybe, if there had been some summary paragraphs, some highlights of maybe things to pull my eye to, to some of the tables or references to points. So, just if that is helpful to you when you think about...
Absolutely.
Your audience, because like I said, that meant absolutely nothing.
Yeah, this is like looking at a medical chart, not being a doctor. I mean, it is, it is inside baseball to the nth degree. And I'd be happy to work with planning if I'm asked to come back and do this again. I'd be happy to write up a little quickie narrative or something on this. But this is best done like we did it, where I kind of showed you the key columns and the key numbers to focus on there. But the data supports that Troy is a very healthy market hotel-wise and can absolutely take more supply. How much more? You know, we'll see. But a few more hotels and the right kind of hotels, no problem. Extended stay, probably a big opportunity for extended stay in Troy right now.
Would you say that, you know, I'll just tell you my perspective as we see some of these hotel applications come through. You know, if you want to bring in another hotel, and you're, you know, gonna assert that the data supports it, and you show me the data, that's all well and good. But then I struggle when a developer comes in here and wants to cram it onto a piece of land that's available but isn't really quite adequate in terms of space, and then talks about wanting to share some parking, right, with a strip plaza or, you know, and it's these... Or a shopping center, right? I mean, it's these instances that really make me go, put the skids on.
You're right, you're right. The shared parking really only works with office buildings because the use is counter-succocle. You check into a hotel at 5:00. You leave the hotel at 8:00. You go to work at 8:00 and leave at 5:00. Office buildings, that share thing works. You know, Rule of Thumb, the other uses you mentioned, I have to be convinced that, because as a hotelier, I don't want to deal with complaints the rest of my life about people not being able to find parking. We're buying a hotel in Jackson Hole, Wyoming next month, and there's a great opportunity to enhance the restaurant in there and just be a killer restaurant. But we don't have the parking. And so, we have to think about to dumb down the restaurant so we don't get people coming to the restaurant and only, I mean... Otherwise, you're upsetting the rest of your, parking in Jackson Hole is just, you can, it's like parking in San Francisco. It just, it's ridiculous. And so, we have to take these into considerations. And you are 100% correct that there's, these supposed spillover uses are not always the best idea. Generally, anything that's office generally works in that formula. And we've seen that work and made it work, and it works just fine. Yeah.
Any other questions? I think that was very great insight, great information.
Yeah, and I asked Ron less than two weeks ago, we were coming to the meeting, and he was able to pull the report for us, which takes a couple of days, and give it to us, and come in and provide a fantastic presentation. So, thank you for doing that. It was really helpful.
Move on to item number 10 on the agenda, public comments for items on the current agenda. Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to anything that was on the current agenda today?
No, I wanted to speak about the hotel.
Sure. Go ahead, please.
So, my name's Greg Crozing. I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing. So, my name's Greg Crozing. I'm the Director of Sales and Marketing for the Embassy Suites by Hilton here in Troy. And I'm an operator, and I too live in the city and obviously have a vested interest. And I believe a lot of everything Ron said. Some things I could argue. I think the most important piece of information that I heard was that a quality developer and operator. And my concern and our company's concern is the developer and operators that are building a lot of these focused service or limited service properties in the metro Detroit area. And they specifically are, you know, the Group 10s, the Kuzos, the A&amp;Ms, Assad Malik, and, or Malik and, I don't remember what A stands for, but, and then the Ameri Lodge, which is Assad Malik, maybe. He's the gentleman that's proposing the couple of properties on Tower Drive next to ours. I don't think they're really stand-up companies, to be honest. And Ron made a very good point. If you go onto TripAdvisor, you can read a lot of what the public says. They run their hotels very lean and mean. And, I mean, you can't look at them negatively for running a business, right? That's what everybody wants to do. I respect them for doing that. I would never work for them. And we hear stories every single day of guests that leave those hotels and come to ours specifically because they run them so lean, and they short-staff their properties, which ultimately gives the area and those hotels a negative image. So, I definitely keep that in mind when it comes to the type of properties and what Troy's overall image is, right? If it is, if it is, you know, quality materials, and there's the whole downtown deal that you eventually want to discuss a four-star boutique-type property, I think the more limited service properties that you let into the area, the less likely you'll ever get a hotel company to commit to a property like that. So, keep that in mind, because it's all about supply, right? Even companies like ours, you know, our company's very similar to Ron's. They're big, reputable management companies. But every hotel has a lifespan, and every brand requires a PIP, a product improvement plan. So, that lifespan of the PIP is typically six to seven years. Ours is expiring actually this year, and we're about to invest another $10 million into the property. But I can tell you that a group like ours is gonna be less likely to do that if there's more supply that comes into the market. I brought some additional data, which I can leave. I highlighted some areas. So, you can, so they catch your eye. But another very reputable report is done by CB Richard Ellis, and they do these reports across the country in addition to Smith Travel Research. And it more looks into, it forecasts the future. And the future is a little more dismal than what Ron had mentioned. Occupancy levels are going to decrease until, their estimate is 2022. So, keep that in mind. This report also, and again, I'll leave this, but this report also shows that Troy has, so this report analyzes submarkets. So, there's six different submarkets in the metro Detroit area. Troy, Auburn Hills, Madison Heights is a submarket. And this submarket has more supply than any other submarket in the entire metro Detroit area, including downtown, which is included in the Dearborn submarket. So, that's a concern in my eyes. He had referenced the annual average of supply growth and it being about 3%, which typically the long term was about 1.9 to 2%. That's another red flag in my eyes. That says we're a whole percentage above what we should be or what the long-term growth was. So, another key factor to keep in mind. So, you know, I really just wanted to say my opinion as an operator of what we experience. I had called Brent earlier this week and asked, you know, what justifies the Planning Commission? And make decisions like that need to mention that Ron was coming in, so I thought I'd come in and speak my piece and, you know, just kind of share some of those statistics that we see and deal with every day. Any questions you guys have?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it.
Do you want me to leave this data that I have here?
Can you send it to Brent electronically?
Absolutely.
And then he can send it out.
Send me a PDF and I'll forward it to everybody.
Thanks. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Item number 11, Planning Commission comments. And we'll start with Mr. Faizan.
Nothing from me. Well, I'll just say, I thought the presentation was very effective and a quick turnaround. So, much appreciated by you and by Ron. So, thanks.
Yeah, I agree with that. It was very informative. Heard some things that I didn't have a clue, you know, about. A lot of the things, as we started telling about quality of development, there are certain things we can look at and fall in our purview, and there are certain things that they're not our bag. I mean, we just cannot, you know, the STC talked about as far as the sound transmission coefficient between rooms. Yeah, I know what the, you know, those kinds of things. But like, for example, all the parking, shared parking versus having enough property to park your own. So, anyways, I thought it was very helpful, very nice presentation. Thank you.
It was after it got explained to me. Now I know why the Aloft didn't get built here.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Grant.
Just again, kudos. Thank you very much for bringing Ron in. Really appreciate it. Very informative. Just a couple of things. I did get a comment about the storage units on Rochester about the light affecting some of the residents. Again, faculty is here that, I guess they did turn down the lights on the upper levels. I don't know how they came about. I think they got complaints from the property owners, Jason property owners, but it was a good move. I think we needed to be responsive to the residents, and I'm sure the developer wants to be a good neighbor and accommodate, you know, those concerns.
About the new storage unit on Rochester?
Yeah. And they were, the lights were shining in people's homes across the street and down the road. So, it was good, you know, I think it was well done. And I don't know how I, I'm sure somebody must have complained and got to the city manager, and they responded. And that was a good thing. I was happy to hear that.
Phil, do you know what caused that? I mean, were the lights installed in property or the...
I think the lights were installed in the upper levels of facility.
Well, we asked for photometrics, and if the photometrics show there's no light spillage on the other property, which is...
That'd be good. Interesting. I don't know if Brent has looked into that. Yeah, I'll have to look into it.
Okay.
They're a really responsible operator. They're a phone call away. So, let me look into it and find what happened. And the second point was I had a little, I was surprised to see the sign on Rochester by the Sharks Restaurant that it's in service now. I think it's an eyesore, and I'm really disappointed that it got to where it's gotten. And I don't know if we do plan on making any revisions to it. And I don't know if we do plan on making any revisions to our sign ordinance, but it's time to do it, and hopefully we can move ahead with responsible sign ordinance to manage our signs in the city of Troy. It's just, it's an eyesore, and we should have to move it. And last thing is, I'm happy to see the facility on, was it Investment Drive? And was it Kirk's, I said, they're finally moving ahead with this cycling. So kudos to the developer. Finally, happy to see that movement.
It continues, because it has, it starts and stops, it starts and stops.
Yeah, I'm sure. The weather has now, but it's, they're moving ahead. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Sarzic?
Yeah.
Ms. Howe?
I want to thank you all for being so patient and friendly to my classmates. I find that people who come, most people don't know what it's about, aren't interested, but once they come, once they stay, they find it's a lot more interesting where they really think it is. There's lots to think about, and I just want to, yeah, thank you for dedicating time to have that little Q and A, even though it had nothing to do with the Flagstar Bank, and that was the public hearing for the Flagstar Bank.
Happy to see them. Just for a smile, recall, if any students coming to.
Tomorrow's the end of the marketing period. Yeah, we have to do two civic engagement field trips per quarter in AP government. So today, there were two meetings, so people.
Very good.
Ms. Edson.
Brent, thank you for bringing in Ron Wilson. He was very persuasive, a very effective speaker. I appreciate that. He's very helpful.
Ms. Cruz.
Okay, so I want to thank you too and echo all the comments. He really did a nice presentation, and like I said, once all those numbers were explained to me, we were all good, it made sense. I do echo Mr. Sanzi's thoughts about the signs. You know, I don't really know what the answer is, but more of those kinds of signs certainly is not the answer. I question the whole idea of these LED signs to begin with. I know I've mentioned this before, but, you know, where my subdivision is at Westwood Park, we have one at the Egyptian Orthodox Church, we have one across the street at Zion Church, and then there's another one at the dentist's office, you know, right next door to my subdivision, and again, at the corner of Liver Noy and Big Beaver at the Renaissance Spa. That whole area glows. It glows from the LED. And I'm just, you know, around residential area, I'm not, that's not appropriate. It's just, it's not appropriate. So, yeah, as a planning commissioner, I know this isn't under my purview, but I'm pretty concerned about the signage situation, so I just want to take that opportunity to echo. And there was something else I was going to say, and it's left me. It's left me. So anyway, thank you.
Well, piggybacking on Ms. Cruz's comments about the signs, just so happened, I was getting ready for dinner, and my wife says, "Put down and get a half a pound of the turkey breasts." And I said, "Okay." So I got a chance to speak to the landlord, but the person who leases sharks, and I was asking him about the sign, and then he says, he just shook his head, he says, "It's not helping me at all." I said, "Oh, you don't get any revenue at all?" And he says, "It's not my property. He doesn't even own the property." So there's all kinds of innuendos about, you know, what, what, what all these billboards. And I know, I'm sure Brent could tell you, this whole thing was in a consent agenda to the city council before, and they did not do anything about it, if I'm correct. So maybe Mr. Savin can verify that, but that's all I have. But again, thank you for the speaker.
Mr. Frank.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanz.
I'm tempted to talk about signs, but maybe I won't.
Please do.
Oh, wait, 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 I remember what I was going to say.
Sorry, it's passed.
No, it's quick, it's quick. The only thing I was going to say about the hotel presentation tonight is, I don't know about the rest of you, but I kind of feel like when we go to make a decision about a hotel, it happens to be one business or industry where there's a big impact to our community by allowing it to come in in a way that, you know, a Flagstar Bank doesn't, or a dentist's office, or a medical building. But, I mean, I just feel like when these particular applications come in front of us, they're particularly serious and need to be well thought out and discussed, and more information is better. So that was my favorite comment.
Signage. There are many residents who have voiced concern about the signs to city council. It's a prior, addressing this issue is a priority. We're going to be bringing in some experts to talk about brightness and safety and come up with a strategy for what to do with these signs. Agree, we need to, we need to comprehensively rewrite the sign ordinance. That's not my decision, but I think that's going to be coming down the road here in the near future. I'm pretty confident. Regulating, measuring and regulating intensity of LED signs is a science, it's a very, very complicated science. Just measuring the brightness alone is complicated. If you want to truly control LED signs, you really truly want to kind of get your, wrap your hands around it, you don't allow them. I mean, that's, that's the easiest way. That being said, there's existing signs, and those property owners have rights. So there's a way to go about eliminating them. It takes time. It takes, it takes an updated ordinance, and it takes amortization of those signs so that, so that the investment made by the property owner is amortized over time. So we're looking at years to, if that's, if that's even the approach that we take. But it's a very, it's not a neat, it's a complicated issue that's going to take a lot of, a lot of study and consideration.
How would you even enforce the brightness?
You can measure it. You measure it, but it's a, it's a, again, it's a complicated science, you can measure it.
It's just like you do streetlights. It's not that difficult.
It is.
And the frequency of the sign changes.
And that's a huge thing. That's one thing we have in our favor. I'm going to go home tonight on 75, and there's a billboard in Auburn Hills, and that sign changes about every six or seven seconds.
By the hour.
Yes, it's very bright, and it lights up, it lights up the southeast Michigan. That is a problem. Our, here in Troy, we have a 60-second requirement. So the frequency isn't the issue, it's the brightness, and that's more of the issue. But we'll get into that at city council. So just, overall, this was a really, I had a, I had a lousy day. I arrived here with a headache tonight, and those students were, that was, that was great. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving the students an opportunity to participate. I think that's how you get people involved and aware. And Claire, I agree with you, it's really great to have them. I wish, I wish we had more students at more meetings. That was, that was great, and I think Mr. Wilson did a fantastic job. So one of the better meetings I've been to in a long time.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Savin, for bringing Mr. Wilson in. And just one comment on that, kind of piggyback echo what everybody else said. Just on a personal note, I'm the type of person that I like data for making decisions, and I like data for just being able to have that to back up different scenarios, different situations. And this is one example where, after tonight's meeting, I'm able to actually look at the next project, whatever comes before us as a hotel, kind of through a different lens, at least from the data perspective, from the demand, from the supply, to be able to get a better grasp of what we, really, the climate that we have here in Troy. So this presentation was, was really, I think, an eye-opener for all of us from what I've heard tonight. So thank you for bringing him in, and it was, it was an excellent presentation again. So if nobody has anything else, then I guess we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you.